Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regarding where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for coming in tonight. We've got a lot of people here, and we like to see that, so appreciate you all coming out. We call the roll, please.
Farmer.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Bachman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. So, tonight, we have two special presentations to start our meeting with, and I'm gonna call Chief Hamlin up first.
Ceremonial swearing-in of our newest officer, Officer Jack Anderson. Jack, can you stand up? Jack was hired back in July 1st, July 11th, actually, and he's done a really great job. He's already completed FTO, and he's come off FTO. He grew up in Beaver Creek, and he comes from a law enforcement background. I believe your father and your brother are both police officers. He graduated from Green County Criminal Justice Academy and proceeded to work for Kettering Health Network, where we stole him from there. Sorry. He now lives in Northmont, he lives in Union, and he is here tonight with his significant other, Ashley, and his daughter, Mr. Gorman, his daughter Sophia. Jack likes doing golfing, fishing, and he likes hiking with his friends, and Mr. Mayor, if you would do the honors, we'd swear him in. Jack, do your family want to come up? They can. Do you want to come up?
Why don't we get a little... Am I ready? Okay, this is the oath of office. County of Montgomery, State of Ohio. Repeat after me, please. I, Jack Anderson.
I, Jack Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
That I will enforce and obey all laws.
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States.
Support and protect the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Officer in the City of Clayton.
Of Officer in the City of Clayton.
Montgomery County.
Montgomery County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Good luck. Good luck.
Did you want to take pictures? You want to get a good picture?
Do you want a G? No?
No. We appreciate that picture.
Thanks to all your family, too, for coming up. Everybody understands that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. Okay, we also have another special presentation.
City Mayor and Council, Firefighter Gates, I'd call you up, please. I'd like to introduce Firefighter Terrence Gates. He's actually lived in Trotwood, graduated from Trotwood City Schools, started actually in the fire service in April of 2023. We hired him shortly after that as a part-time employee. Then, in May of this year, we had a full-time vacancy due to someone leaving for another job somewhere else, and he was offered a position, and he took it, and we were glad for him to do that. Terrence is very energetic, and he brings a lot of energy to the shift, so we enjoy that, and he enjoys his extracurricular activities. He likes sports, track and basketball. Not, you couldn't tell with the height, okay? Didn't you run hurdles?
I did not.
No, no. But, so, he enjoys sports. He's a great young kid to be around, young man to be around, and he does a great job. And he's aspiring to go to paramedic school next year, so he'll better himself and help the community more by going to paramedics, and he's done us a really good job. We've had nothing but positive feedback from his shift and from his mentor and even from the community. You know, we've gotten some thank you cards and stuff, you know, just because of how he interacts with the public, and we appreciate that. So, Terrence, did I say anything?
I appreciate getting the opportunity from Chief Garber. I'm fairly new to the fire service, so it was really exciting to be able to get my first full-time job so soon with such great guys to, you know, be able to learn as much as I did in such a short time.
Thank you. Welcome to the team.
And Terrence will be sworn in at our ceremony, and I believe we're gonna do that in November this year as the collaborative, as we do once every year. We try to do all the swearing-ins at one time, because obviously, we go through them quite quickly, so I think we got, like, ten or eleven people we're swearing in here in November between the collaboratives, so we'll do that, and I will get information out to you on that final date. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Chief. Welcome, Terrence. Thanks, all, for the support coming in. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, we do have two public hearings tonight, and I'm gonna read through our rules that are set up for public hearings, just so everybody's clear on what is going on. So, the meeting procedures will go like this. Staff will present the case. I'll ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation or have anything to add. I will ask council members if they have any questions for the staff or for the applicant. I will ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment. I will then ask for any public comments in favor or opposition of the application. I will ask for a motion to close the floor with, after everyone that speaks wants to speak. I will ask for the applicant if they would like to respond to any of the public comments. I will ask if there are any further discussion among council members. I will ask for a motion to recommend approval, approval with conditions or disapproval to the applicant's request. And lastly, I will ask for a motion to close the meeting. Again, we have two presentations tonight. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask, just throw this out to anyone here who is, wants to speak to either of these two issues that we have on our docket tonight, you'll need to stand up and take an oath. So, anyone who thinks that they might speak, even if you don't speak, that's fine, but if you think you might speak, we'll have to have you under oath. So, everybody that thinks they might speak, if you'd stand up.
Mr. Mayor, including the staff?
Staff also? Oh, oh. Sorry, Candace. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ellen. So, raise your right hands, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Okay, thank you. You're all duly sworn in. The first request is a request to rezone the properties at M-60... Barb, you're much better at reading this, but I'll try, make it through. Rezone the properties at M-60-03109-0030 and M-60-03109-0034 from RSD to CMX. The request was made by Gerald L. McDonald, who's the applicant. Ellen, you present the case?
Good evening, Council. This case is number PC-24-02. Again, that's parcel M-60-031-09-0030 and parcel M-60-031-09-0034, made by Gerald L. McDonald, in regard to requesting a zoning change from RSD to CMX. Introduction to the application. Application number PC-24-02 for rezoning received on June 10th, 2024. The applicant is Gerald L. McDonald on behalf of the property owners. The property owners in question, the first one for M-60-031-09-0030, which contains 2.044 acres of land and had a house on it, it was 4970 West Winger Road. The house was removed, but one small accessory structure remains, is owned by BLK 94 Holdings LLC. The other property, parcel M-60-031-09-0034, which contains 3.0313 acres, had a house 4940 West Winger Road. The house was removed, again, a small garage remains, and it also contains another residential property, 7870 Hoak Road. That residential home does remain as well. This property is owned by Kipling Terry D. and Bonita J. Public notice was printed in the Eaton Register Herald on August 14th, 2024, and the Dayton Daily News on September 10th, 2024, and letters to property owners within 300 feet of the site were postmarked and mailed on August 16th, 2024, and September 9th, 2024. The location of the parcels is near the intersection of Winger Road and Hoak Road. The parcel IDs, again, are M-60-031-09-0030 and M-60-031-09-0034, and have a combined acreage of 5.0753 acres. It should be noted that M-60-031-09-0060, which contained 2.040 acres, was recently combined with parcel number 34, which previously had an acreage of 0.993 acres. The current zoning of these parcels is RSD, also known as Residential Single Unit District. The proposed zoning is CMX, which is Commercial Mixed Use. Staff reviewed and provide to each Planning Commission member the following documents: the application, the letter of intent or narrative statement, the site plan, residential use table, the commercial use table, and the future land use plan. Here's a map of the properties. This is, you can kind of see where the intersection of Winger and Hoak is. This is to the bottom right of that intersection. It's kind of a backwards C shape. And then, here's a more specific property. You can kind of see the two parcels that were combined is the one that faces Hoak Road and also touches Winger Road. It's kind of that backwards L shape. The analysis of the request: The applicant desires to convert the existing zoning of the parcels from RSD to CMX. The applicant does not desire to change the existing parcel layout as a result of the zoning change. The property is located within the Clayton Improvement District Number One, or CID-1, and the existing zoning of RSD allows a number of permitted and conditional residential uses. The residential use table was attached to the staff report. It's just a little lengthy, so I didn't include it here on the presentation. The proposed zoning of CMX also allows a number of permitted and conditional uses... permitted and conditional, sorry, residential and commercial uses. The commercial use table is, again, attached to the staff report. Again, it's a little lengthy, so not included on this presentation. The use of the one existing residential structure is permitted within the proposed zoning change. The use of the one existing accessory structure is already considered legal nonconforming. The change in zoning would not change that classification. The applicant indicates no new development is proposed with this application, and that any future modifications to the use of the property will require a zoning certificate, building permit, and other applicable studies and assessments. This is the future land use plan, and it indicates this area to be flex use. I've just included what the flex use is, and then circled in red this area of the future Planning Commission recommendation: After evaluating the applicant's request and providing an opportunity for public input, the Planning Commission passed a motion to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I'm gonna send this out to the applicant. You want to make a presentation?
I do a quick one.
Sure. If you'd just state your name and address or who you're with, for the record.
My name is Gerald McDonald. I am with the firm Pick, Roll, Schaefer &amp; Ebling. The address is 40 North Main Street, Suite 2700 in Dayton. And as zoning goes, this one has a lot of positives. It's supported by staff. It was recommended by the Planning Commission. It's consistent with the city's use plan. It's consistent with the trends in the area, and it can serve as a catalyst for council's visions for this area. Let me explain. Supported by staff. We went to staff first to say, "This is what our issue is, what can we do?" And we looked at the future land use plan, and they suggested the CMX, because that's the closest to what Ellen talked about, the flex zoning. And, as you know, staff's mission, the reason staff is here, is to bring to fruition council's goals, council's objectives, council's policy. And where do you have those? For zoning, it's in the land use plan. And that is what they did. They recommended the zoning here to be what is closest to that plan, and in my experience, and I've been doing this 30 years, it's a long time to be doing zoning, a positive nod from the people that work day-to-day with the zoning in the In-N-Outs is a very positive first step, so we were very encouraged with that. This was recommended by the Planning Commission. There was a lot of discussion at Planning Commission, which is a positive, because they vetted the issues. We talked about just about everything there, and ultimately, a positive recommendation came out of Planning Commission. It's consistent with the land use plan, I don't need to beat that. I mean, we pretty much know that. One thing that... Let me go on to the next one. Like I said, we don't want to beat that one. It's consistent with the trends in the area, and why do I say that? 400 feet to the south, commercial. 700 feet to the north, there's the nursery, which is a commercial. There are several apparent home occupations right in this area. There is a major improvement coming on the roads in this area, and there's newer residential developments both to the north and to the west. So, what does all this indicate? And to me, it indicates that a single-family homesite along this stretch of road is kind of losing its appeal. I mean, the young homeowners are probably not gonna look for a single-family home in that area. And you're saying, "Wait a minute, that's a negative." And yeah, that's a negative, but here's why I'm gonna turn it around. Where it is a positive is that this property is just well-suited to be the commercial property in this area. Allowing the commercial mix here is gonna be a positive step, because if it goes here, it's not necessarily gonna go someplace else that may be less attractive for it. The last of the five positives is that this is the catalyst, really, to get your plan going. Land use plans take a long, long time, and they're usually little baby steps over the years, and this is one of those baby steps. The city has long thought of this as commercial. Your first land use plan that I saw was from 1999, said office. It was amended, now it's still office, commercial uses. So, for the last 25 years and through amendments, the city has recognized this spot, and why? Because it makes sense. I mean, from an urban planning perspective, growth is gonna happen. City has to grow to survive. Commercial's gonna be coming. So, what the job of council is to find the strategic spots for the commercial, those little pockets where it will fit, and this is one of those little pockets. We're on a corner here. This is why I say it's a catalyst. In the development business, it's, as goes the corner, so goes the block. So, when you start with a rezoning and you got the corner lot, that gets people's attention. And rezoning these parcels is going to send that positive signal to the developers that may be out there in commercial. And typically, as you may know, commercial development's gonna say, "How many... What's the traffic count? How many rooftops?" They figure that out, and they draw the circle. So, I'm the developer, and I'm gonna look for something in this circle. I can either go over here, where it's agricultural and residential, and say, "Hell, that's a good spot. I'm sure I won't have any problem going there," or I can go down here and say, "City just recently rezoned that to the exact type of use I'm looking for. I bet I have a better shot going down there, where it's more palatable for the city than Now, I want to point out something. There's no current plans associated with this. So, this is simply two property owners, they want to get their property zone consistent with the city and consistent with the present world. Why do they want to get their property rezoned? Because they want to get the best return on their land. We have Terry and Bonita Kipling, lived there 20, 30 years. They're probably gonna still live there for a while after it's rezoned. That's their home. We have BLK 4 Holdings LLC. Ugh, that sounds scary. What is that? Let me tell you. Jean and Betty Kern purchased this property back in 1954, I believe it was, had their children, raised four children there. When Jean passed, excuse me, not when Jean, but when Betty died, after Jean, she left the property to her four children. They didn't want the name of the property in their individual names, they put it in the name of this LLC. So, it is not a development company, it's four siblings that hold one asset, being this You, one last thing, and I'm sorry, I keep going off my notes, is that at the Planning Commission, there's a lot, a lot of talk about the CMX zoning and things like that, and one thing I want to remember, and I believe that Ellen pointed to this, is that this is in the overlay district already. It is subject to 112106, which are all the standards that you set forth, parking standards and all things like that. So, most of the uses, when you look down at the commercial uses, a lot of them are conditional, which means they're coming back to you. A lot of them are big. This is a funny-shaped lot that, you know, "Oh, it's five acres." Not really, it's two acres, and then it'll strip down here, and then another thing. So, it's not in and of itself going to go to a lot of those uses that may scare people. After the Planning Commission, someone said to me, "You guys gonna put a marijuana place there?" And I said, "Well, one, I don't know if the city allows marijuana, but even if they did, it can't, because it's within 500 feet of a park." So, you know, for any of the people that had those fears, that's not gonna be going there. So, again, you know, we feel that this is a positive step, and we just hope that you guys will continue the positive trend and approve of the zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Council members, is there any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question, sir. I asked Amanda this question, and she said that you don't have any problem with it, and that is, one, you know there's a new Montgomery County soil and water plan up there, and two, is that it's planned for a roundabout. And I was told you have no problems with either one of those, and whatever you do, you will protect those two things.
We don't have any choice on either of those two things. You know, Montgomery County is not gonna say, "Oh, pardon us, we won't do this." Yes, we fully expect...
They changed it once, you know? Okay, all right, so you do have a say in the matter, sir.
Well, we have our voice, definitely, but yes, we're fully aware of that. That was part of the catalyst of maybe we should look at a rezoning, so absolutely, Make sure there's no other questions.
You're in compliance. I mean, basically, that's what the answer is, correct?
I'm sorry?
You're in compliance.
With the code and with the...
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
With the future land plan, 100%.
I have a question.
Sure.
Mind working? So, you stated, I read here, you have no change in use, so you do not have a proposed use.
No, no, no. We don't have anybody waiting in the wings, watching, nothing like that.
Have we spoke with residents? Has any resident had concern from an adjacent property?
We have received no notice from any of the residents of adjacent properties.
Okay, then, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Then I'll ask for a motion in a second to open the floor to public comment.
Move for public comment.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Bachman to open the floor, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and I'm gonna have to give you a couple more rules here, because we have some specific rules for public comment. Okay, each speaker will have three minutes to make your comments. If your comment has been made by a previous speaker, please do not replicate the comments. Direct your comment to Clayton's City Council and not directly to the applicant. The applicant will have a chance to respond to the comments at the end. Once the floor has been closed to public comment, no additional comments can be made. So, if you want to speak, you're gonna have your spot, and we'll expect you to speak, So, is there, I think, we'll ask first for, is there any opponents, people that would be for this change, that would like to speak? Opponents? Did you get sworn... You were sworn in? Yeah. Come on up, and if you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rick Bowers. I live at 7897 Hoak Road. I've been a resident there for 39 years. We built that house in 1985. I know pretty much all the neighbors up and down the street. You're asking about possibly neighbor input. Everybody is for the changes that we're gonna make, just to alleviate traffic problems. It's impossible to get out of my driveway when school's in, and it's just getting worse and worse. And I think, really, everybody's kind of excited about the roundabout coming in and widening the road. It's gonna give it more of an upscale look and make it a better place for everyone. I'm hoping they can bring some restaurants in, so we don't have to drive to Miller Lane all the time. It's my biggest hope, but other than that, I think everybody's excited about it and would like to see it move forward. That's really all I got to say.
All right. Thank you, sir. I might have misspoke. I think I said opponents at first, but I meant proponents. So, you're a pro... Yeah, you're a proponent, so I stand corrected. Sorry about that. Thank you, sir. Is there any other proponents? Anybody else for it that would like to speak? In hearing none, I'm gonna say, is there any opponents? Anyone who would be against this change?
I move we close the public comments.
Second.
There's been a motion to close the public comments by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The floor has been closed. Is there any public comments in favor of the opposition? In favor or opposition? So, if there's anybody else that would like to speak, just from the public? Okay, you step right up and state your name and...
I, just a question. Bob Fee, 79, Talmadge Road, Clayton, Ohio. I assume that all of the adjacent property owners have been notified of this, I guess. I just hadn't heard that. Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask the applicant, did you want to respond to any of the public comments? Okay. Any further discussion among council members?
Yeah, I've got just some input for the rest of us. I'd asked Martina and the city manager to provide the copy of our zoning code, and if you look at Section H under 1141.10, Item 3, it says, "Application have a proposed use of the property." And we really don't have a proposed use, and that leaves me concerned in that if we do approve this, then we open up, okay, well, if we don't have a use, well, I added up, there are 101 potential uses that could go in that zoning, maybe which would not have to come back through Planning Commission. not have to come back through planning commission or council. So I, I guess I'm, to me, I'm, I don't necessarily have a problem with the zoning itself. It's more of the timing that if they came with an intended use, that we have a little more control over what will be going there. So it's really, it's, it's the timing. It's that I really can't do the rest of section H without a proposed use in terms of evaluating why we should do the zoning change. It's, uh, um, zone, changing zoning is a big deal. So that, that's, that's where my concerns are and I'm certainly open to some feedback on, uh, what your thoughts would be on, on what I just shared.
Anybody want to respond?
Well, I think the one, you and I had a conversation and I, and I think one of the concerns or questions that comes up, I'm not in real estate, and a person looking for property to develop, it's going to be for sale. If it's already zoned as being residential and they're looking for a commercial or resi, or retail type place to build, they aren't going to be looking at property that's already zoned or only zoned currently as residential if they're looking for a commercial development. And I, and I think what we're, we want to try to do is rely on the, excuse me, the knowledge, the expertise and the integrity of the city staff to be looking at what's the best for the city as far as how things come in. I mean, we're going to rely on them as keeping things out that we don't necessarily want, you know? Do we want a wall on our backyard? I don't particularly want a wall on my backyard, you know? Or, um, every once, uh, what's the guys down south of town, they're moving up to Huber Heights, you know, Buc-Ee's? Do you want Buc-Ee's in your backyard? I, I don't particularly want Buc-Ee's, but I think you're relying on the staff to look at what we have and what we don't necessarily want coming into the community and what's going to fit within the infrastructure. And not trying to take individual items, looking at the bigger picture as far as how do you want the staff to work on making things move forward? And I may not have been really exactly clear on that, but I mean, the idea is like you're, you're trying to use staff to make decisions that's in the best interest and not have individual staff persons, you know, interjecting individual opinions on how things are done. And that's down to micromanagement and I don't think we want that. I said, that's just basically my opinion, but I don't know. Amanda, you have, you're, you're better with words than I am.
Not by much. So if we look at this history here, whenever we're talking about zoning changes in the city of Clayton, um, you know, when you look particularly at H with the proposed use of the property, I mean, they are proposing that the property will now be used for commercial use. That's the proposed use. And as recently as 2019, if you look at the 54 acres that's on Salem, we changed that zoning from RS, well, what's RSD now? It was R3 at the time to CM or GI, to general industrial, which is now CMI or, yes, CMX, sorry, CMX. And we made that change without an end user because we knew in the land use plan that that property was slated to be commercial. So there is a history of the city making those changes without an end user.
Is that property owned by the city?
No, the property is not owned by the city. It's owned by a private owner.
I, I think another concern I have is that we are reasonable and consistent with whoever comes forward for zoning change, that we're not, because I, if you notice, these two that we're viewing tonight are very similar. It's just the location is different. So, you know, one, they said yes, others, they said no. And that, to me, that, that it came across as inconsistent. So, um, and that, that, maybe that's just my beef. We need to be logical and consistent and where's our consistency? It's in the code and it's following that criteria.
And I don't disagree with you. Staff's recommendation that both of those zoning changes be approved has not changed. I know that planning commission, that they made their decision based on H3 is my understanding. It was H3 that was the hang up for them, which was the proposed use. But even not talking, not to get into the weeds with the other proposal, but even with that, you know, they're wanting to go from RCD2 to RSD. So their proposed use is still residential. They have a proposed use. They just don't have an end user.
Also remind, the, uh, the property that Ms. Emmeline mentioned on Salem is where Star Trucking is the name of the...
Roadstar, they're on the six acre.
Mind keep doing that? So, um, I'm sorry, the feedback lost my thought there. So, you know, their, their plans, even though after the, that property did get rezoned without an initial end user, then did, you know, they still had to come before planning commission and to council. Think better?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I need to go? Still come to us for any of the approval of their, of their building, their specs and everything like that. So it doesn't just give a clear pass to, you know, anything there. It's not like Amazon can suddenly put a warehouse right there.
So just for clarification, the, so the 54 acres was zoned CMX. The six acre parcel, parcel where Roadstar is, was originally zoned residential and they came in and asked for it to then be zoned CMX. So that's why that came before council. So you're not wrong, they did come before council when that was rezoned because they did not have the underlying zoning already in place. But it was the zoning of the 54 acres that spurred the necessity and the desire for that six acres to then be zoned commercial.
I'd like to just say a word too about, um, you know, it's one thing about the history, but I'm, you know, I'm thinking about the future of the city. We, we have, this been long plan to extend Oak Road, improve Oak Road all the way to 40. I don't know when that'll be, but we know when it's going to be for, to Winger. It's going to be very soon. And I think it's, I think the applicant actually said it best, you know, it becomes less desirable to buy that land and build a house. I mean, no one's, no one's going to do that likely. Um, it, I'd be very surprised. Those are great houses. Some, you know, some people know I grew up on Oak Road, you know, a tenth of a mile away from what we're talking about right now. So I'm very familiar with it and, you know, I mean, once, once Walmart came in and the other businesses up there that came in, I mean, it's just, it would be, it just wouldn't make sense to keep it residential in my mind. So, I mean, to me, it's, again, it's a look toward the future. Once we get, you know, the rest of the improvements done on Oak up, up to Winger, we'll get, you know, the roundabout in and set, then we can start working our way up the other. And like you said, it's, it's a lot of baby steps and I wish it could be quicker, but it's just not. But, um, I think this is, for me, it's probably a no brainer, but...
The only thing I would have to add is Mr. Muncie on the planning commission was the one member who voted against the rezoning to commercial stating he had no problem with it, but would have preferred to have an end use for us to approve and control. And the thing that comes to my mind is, you know, Mr. Bowers, your property's beautiful. I've been there before. I would be concerned changing this to commercial with us having then less control as to what goes in there versus changing it when we have an applicant and no, knows, and we know what can go in there. Um, I, I think for me, the sticking point is the Dollar General that we are going to now have, that we have no control over. And if there's 100 uses of things that can go in there that we now lose control over, that is concerning to me because I don't want then Mr. Bowers coming back to us saying, I would like you to stop this and we would then have our hands tied. So that's the sticking point that Mr. Muncie said at the planning commission and I, I have to almost agree with him with that, just because I think we should keep, you know, some control as to what goes in there. I, I'm not saying, I'm, in the future, I wouldn't be against this, but I think having an end user would be helpful.
Well, I think, I think rarely, well, I don't know how rare it is, but I'm going to say, in my, I'm a real estate agent, so rarely in my experience with this, you don't have end users. Many, many times, I mean, most of the time when you have, you know, commercial land for sale, I mean, I'd like to say it sells really quick, but sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. And I, I think if you have people looking for, if you have developers out there looking for, to, to build a business, to build a restaurant, like you say, or to build some other type business, you know, and they see it's zoned residential, I mean, they're likely to look over it. Some people fight it and try to get the, the changes done like we're doing here, but some, many won't. Many skip right over it and say, what, look, they're, you know, that city has that zoned resident, residential. And to me, the flex is just about the perfect designation because it, it gives us a lot of flexibility on the, on what can go there. So hopefully, you know, we attract, if we set the right tone, we will attract good businesses. We'll get good restaurants in and, and these things and, but if we set the wrong tone, we won't get development. And I think that's important. Again, I, I'm not looking at the past so much as I am as the future. Um, you know, we need to be ready. When someone comes in and wants to buy land, we need to be ready to go because if we're not, everyone else is. There's, there's, we're not the only game in town. There's tons of cities around here and you, you see development going on and I think they've set the right tone. And I think, again, I think I'm looking for the future of the city and again, I think this is in my mind, pretty easy call, so...
I agree with Mike. I'm just going to make a comment. And if you're looking as a property owner and a property isn't going to be used to rechange the zoning, so you're there, you have the widening of Oak Road, you have the roundabout. If that particular property wants to sell their property and it's not going to be rezoned, the property value will be lessened because of the fact they can't use it for mixed use. So that's something else too, that's a concern. And also the future of Clayton and the land use plan, that's a huge concern too, for the future. What's going to happen? What could possibly be there? And I understand your comment, Kenny, and with control, but at the same point, if we don't do something now, there won't be any control either way. So just something to think about for the future.
I think it should be noted, you know, when we talk about control, just because it changes at CMX, doesn't mean that developers get a free rein on whatever goes there. There are guidelines that are put in place by this council in the zoning code that directs staff as to what can go in those places. And some of those are conditional uses, so they would have to work their way back through, uh, they would go through the BZA at that point for a conditional use. But, you know, it's not like they can just come in and drop whatever they like in that spot. There's still processes, they're still held to other sections of the code, 1126, for non-residential standards.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's, that that is unanimous?
So Amanda, can you, you said that we do have some control. So I'm looking at the, I, I have an inquiry though for the city manager. When I'm looking at this attachment E for mixed use, I mean, we don't have a def, like, we don't have the definition of what could or could not go in there right now, do we?
We do. So there is a use table. I don't know if it was attached, um, yeah, the use table is attached. So the things that are listed under, I'm sorry, bear with me here, under CMX, the ones with a P are permitted, the ones with C are conditional. And things that are not, thank you, Martina. And the things, if the space is left blank, that's not permitted or conditionally allowed in that space at all. So city council has given staff parameters on what is able to go in those places. And if you're looking for a specific definition of what beverage is brewing and distilling is, which is permitted in commercial mixed use, um, you would go back and look at the definitions in the zoning code, which I don't have in front of me, but those definitions are there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that public hearing is closed and we'll move to the next public hearing. It is PC 24 dash 03, a request to rezone the property at M60032060020 from RCD2 to RSD. The request was made by Clayton Land Holding LLC and that's the property owner. Ellen?
Good evening again. This is case number PC 24 dash 03. Again, it's parcel M60032060020, Clayton Land Holding LLC. This is a request for a zoning district change from RCD2 to RSD. Introduction to the application. The application number PC 24 dash 03 for rezoning was received on July 2nd, 2024. The applicant is Bill Parker on behalf of Clayton Land Holding LLC, the property owner, again for parcel M60032060020, which contains 10 acres and no structures, is owned by Clayton Land Holding LLC. Public notice was printed in the Eaton Register Herald on August 14th, 2024, and the Dayton Daily News on September 9th, 2024. And letters to property owners within 300 feet of the site were postmarked and mailed on August 16th, 2024, and September 9th, 2024. The location of the parcel is near the intersection of Westbrook Road and Oak Road. Parcel is M60032060020 and has an acreage again of 10 acres. Uh, the current zoning is RCD2, otherwise known as Rural Conservation District 2. Proposed zoning is RSD, residential single unit district. Staff reviewed and provide to each planning commission member the following documents: the application, the letter of intent or narrative statement, the site plan, the residential use table, and the future land use plan. This is a general map of the area. Everything highlighted is within 300 feet of the subject property. The subject property is kind of up and towards the center of the screen. And this is a more specific area. Again, the subject parcel is highlighted. Analysis of the request. The applicant desires to convert the existing zoning of the parcel from RCD2 to RSD. The applicant does desire to change the existing parcel layout as a result of the zoning change. The minimum acreage for RCD2 is 10 acres. The applicant is seeking a zoning change in order to split the parcel into two pieces. The applicant intends to sell four acres to an adjacent property owner to the north and the applicant intends to sell the remaining six acres to an interested buyer who may have an interest in developing the property into a smaller residential neighborhood. The property is not located within the Clayton Improvement District Number One or CID1. The existing zoning, RCD2, allows a number of permitted and conditional residential uses. And again, the residential use table is attached to the staff report, just not this presentation because it's a little lengthy. And the proposed zoning of RSD allows a number of permitted and conditional uses, residential uses. And again, the residential use table is attached to the staff report. The applicant indicates no new development is proposed with this application, but that future development is possible. Any future modification to the configuration of property that will exceed the creation of five parcels, dedicate roadway, create easements, or otherwise be considered a major subdivision will require planning commission and city council approval as a major subdivision. Here is the future land use plan. It identifies this area as industrial. And the proposed zoning change to RSD would present a less intense land use and is more desirable to residential property owners on adjacent properties. Planning Commission recommendation, after evaluating the applicant's request and providing an opportunity for public input, the planning commission passed a motion to recommend denial of the proposed rezoning.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? And would you like to make a presentation or speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, step up and if you would state your name and your address and who you're with for the record? Oh, yeah. We need to swear you in. We need to swear you in.
Yes, please.
Yeah. All right, just right hand. Do you solemnly swear to or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Bill Parker. I'm one of the co-managing members of Clayton Land Holding. Some of you folks might know Jim Davis. I don't know if you do or not. Jim's been in the area for 60 or 70 years. been in the area for 60 or 70 years, and he's under, under the Parkinson's disease pretty badly right now. I'd seen him a couple of weeks ago. But anyway, I'm picking up the pieces on the property. But myself and about 10 others acquired this property back in the early 2000s. And we were, we were looking most likely to try to develop it later on. Some of the steps that people don't realize, or you may have, may not have heard about planning, is having a good plan, doing your market study, and then getting that verified by an outside planning firm. We've been fortunate to work, I've had about 15 planning studies done. I was a planner in my day years ago. I was a senior planner at the state of Ohio. So I, you know, I basically go in, if you want to hear this, I go in and I look at the existing market. I'll go to the courthouse, I'll see how many subdivisions have been started in the last five years, what is the absorption rate, what is the price points. I'll go to the site, I'll look at soils, I'll look at trip generations based on, on the product that needs to go in there. I'll look at the curb cuts. For example, for speed limit from an intersection, you have 10 foot per mile per hour. So if we got a 35 mile per hour, we got to be 350 feet, you know, north or south, or east or west of, of that. We did a land plan based on the desires of a developer last year, and presented it to Jack Koontz, I believe it was, and I can't remember Seth's last name. And we had a, we actually had a contract, a non-contingent contract. I didn't like the land plan, because it was very bulk, 16 units of the acre and so forth. And Jack told, I believe it was Arbor Homes, you know, that he needed, that we needed to cut the density, density back down. So I did a land plan based on my experience. Looked at the 10 acres, I looked at fire protection, being 600 feet for a cul-de-sac because of fire hoses, et cetera. The property is approximately 550 feet east and west, and almost the same north and south. So when you go back to the, to the west, you know, you're gonna go back minus 120 feet, the cul-de-sac dimension, and you might have 300 feet left. So Jim was approached prior to, to his illness by, by the neighbor to the north. And he wanted to protect his property. And the reason he wanted to protect his property is in your comprehensive land use plan, you have, obviously, and I don't understand it, quite frankly, you have an industrial sector right here. It's not a good transition, quite frankly, from that to Moss Creek, which is trying to come back, from what I understand. So given that, you know, to keep the property owners happy, that was the reason for Mr., I can't remember his name, that terrible, the neighbor to the north, I've never met him. Yeah, Mr., Josh, Josh Hackett, I believe it was. So we communicated with Josh, he wanted to protect his property. So we've been under contract for a couple of months with Josh to acquire four acres along Oak Road. And we've been approached by other people on the remaining, actually, seven acres, because there's a one-acre parcel that's already single-family residential on the corner. That's desires of basically doing the same thing. We don't know what the intended use would be. But apparently, the Planning Commission, let me back up. And your representatives, Amanda and, and Ellen, you know, they approved this. You know, I've met with them on several occasions. We went through a good planning. We looked at the principles and practices of urban planning. It all met that. We have the site distances, we got the protection. I've looked at trip generations out of the property, which, if it were residential, being the six acres, you'd have, you got, you got 10 trips per household daily coming out of there. So it doesn't require signalization, while Westbrook and Oak probably does require signalization. When you got 15,000 cars on Westbrook, and maybe 5,000 cars on Oak Road, it'll eventually, I'm sure, would become signalization. So given that, I was really surprised, and, and I'm, I'm for the people on the, on the commercial, but, you know, there's a lot to commercial in terms of, you know, if you've got 60,000 square feet of space, you need three times the space for parking. But I've looked at all that. So our project is very minimal. It's across the street from, from RSD. And it's pretty straightforward. We're up in age. We're in a new age group, ancient. You know, you got old and ancient, and we're in the ancient. So, you know, we're trying to just, the few assets we have, we just need to move on. So that's basically where I am. But we've studied it closely. There's a need, and we've done our research. In fact, we had Louis Ranchero, I believe he's locally here, in Inglewood. You know, he did, he did a design based on my design, of those maybe, potentially 13 lots. Most likely, it'll go to somebody for a ranchette, the remaining six acres, and then we don't know about the corner. So that's me, and that's what it's all about. And I'll be glad to answer any questions or go into more detail.
Is there any questions for Mr. Parker or for the staff?
Mr. Parker, when you were meeting with city staff, I saw they, you went this route. Did you discuss any other options on achieving your objective, like maybe doing a variance on the terms of?
Quite frankly, I didn't think we'd need it. And I think your staff would probably support that. I'm not trying to speak for them, but I've discussed with staff and made presentations. I wouldn't have a problem, you know, just, you know, if, if, yeah, go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, I've done it before. I've actually zoned, I'm not a lawyer, but I've zoned 1,500 acres in my lifetime. Done some major golf projects. I've done the land plans myself. I've actually designed the streets and so forth. One being Country Club of the North. And I actually designed Moss Creek. And I'm not here to brag, but bought Yankee Trace and the top PGA signature courses around, so.
So the issue with going, sorry, the issue with going before a BZA would be that if Mr. Parker wanted to split off the four acres, since it's RCD2, they could not split off a four-acre lot for that. It would make a non-conforming lot in RCD2, and that's not permitted.
Yeah, your zoning, your zoning orders is a little different with your matrix. And you're, you're, you've condensed R1, R2, R3, light industrial, heavy industrial, and you combined all that. But I've not seen, you know, single-family, and I can appreciate what you've done. But typically, it used to be one acre, 150 feet, by 275. Then it got into two acres, and then you got into leach fields, and they've doubled. So, you know, there's a lot to consider. But we, I've done the homework for this a couple of years ago. It's pretty straightforward.
So what was staff's recommendation of Planning Commission for this?
Staff recommendation was to approve the, the change. So-
Staff recommended approve this change, and then staff recommended approve the last change?
Yes.
And they only went with the last one?
With the last one, yes.
So I, I want to make a comment. I agree with one thing that you said. It's definitely a better transition, if it were, if it were, and I'm guessing, because I actually asked Amanda, myself, why we had the industrial zoning up there. My guess is, it's prior to my time up here, but I think it probably had to do with Caterpillar-
Oh, I'm sure.
Development and all that at that time. But down there, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of homes between Caterpillar and, and the school, CTC. And one more thing, so, and you're aware that the state of Ohio has recommended a roundabout there?
No, but I, I'd like to see it.
I'm talking about right at Hoke and Westbrook, yeah.
You know, they have roundabouts on the interstate in, in London. Did you know that? Big, the M6 and some of those, I mean, they're huge.
That doesn't make them good, though. That just makes it, yeah.
Tim's anti-roundabout, yeah.
You're right.
We had one over on North Dixie Drive, which they finally took out because it wasn't worth a, well, the traffic circle was over there for, I don't know how many years before I was here, but it was there for a long time.
They're better now.
Circle, not a roundabout.
I'm gonna comment on that.
Any other questions for the staff or the applicant?
I have a question. You're asking for, for rezoning from RCD2 to residential. Is there a reason why you didn't want to just split it between RCD1?
Quite frankly, it's no different than commercial. Everybody want to get the, the best value out of it, and supply product for the marketplace. That's all.
Instead of being residential, just make it RCD1 for the two parcels?
No, you're, it's RCD2 currently.
Correct. You're talking, splitting off four acres, which would then be non-conforming as RCD2.
That's, well, the gentleman wanted to buy, and I've never met him, wanted to purchase the whole 10 acres. And quite frankly, he couldn't get funding for it. That would've been the best of all worlds, so.
But if he wanted it for, you know, extra space, or cushioning, or prevent something else from coming in next to him, right?
That's correct.
So the remaining six acres being a non-conforming RCD2 plot at that point?
That's correct.
Why, why didn't you just ask for it to be rezoned as RCD1?
Value, to be honest with you. I mean, that's just a perfect, I mean, that's my answer. It's value, it's business, it's value. We've had the property a long time. And it's an option for us, instead of all of our, putting all of our eggs in one basket, yeah. And, and my guys have been around a long time, you know. So, trying to do the best I can for them.
So what would the other, other four-acre plot be zoned as? You'd just be adjoining with whatever he's got?
It would be combined with, what, what is it? Is it RCD1 to the north there? Okay. Right, yes.
Mr. Taggitt's property already is RCD1?
Yes.
Is there sewer and water in this area?
Yes.
Anything else for staff or the applicant? Okay, is there a motion to open the floor to public comment?
I'll move for public comment.
Second, sorry.
Motion to open the floor by Mr. Bachman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Again, I'm going to explain the rules. I think everyone was here at first, for the first public hearing. Sorry. Each speaker will have three minutes to make your comments. If your comment's been made by a previous speaker, you know, please don't replicate. Direct your comment to Clayton City Council, and not directly to the applicant. The applicant will have a chance to respond to the comments at the end. And once the floor has been closed to public comment, no additional comments can be made. Okay, is there any public comments in favor of the proposed change? This would be in favor of or proponent. Hearing none. Is there anyone here that would oppose it or be against the change?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the public comment section of the hearing by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I'm not going to ask the applicant if he would like to respond to any comments, because we didn't have any comments. Anything else for the good of the order from anyone?
I'd like to move that we close the public hearing. Close the hearing, period.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Thanks, everyone who came in tonight to speak and present. We appreciate you. And we'll move on. The next thing on our agenda is our clerk's report.
I move for approval.
Okay, you have before you the council meeting minutes of September 5, 2024.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the report as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that is unanimous. And our next comment is our visitors' comments. Excuse me, just one second. Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for signing in. And I'm going to call everyone's name. And there's only a couple of people that have indicated they want to speak, but I'm gonna call everyone's name in case anyone's changed their mind. Thomas Jones? Thank you, sir. Bill Marker? Thank you, sir. Is it Jerry McDonald? Thank you, sir. Walter Kern? Thank you, sir. We're gonna wait on the end for Mr. Harlemur. Benita Kipling? Terry Kipling? Mr. and Mrs. Plummer? Jim Anderson? Yeah. Ashley Sams, I think she was with them. Either of the Bowers want to speak again? Good. Debbie Whistler? Step up and state your name and address. You've got five minutes, Debbie. We're getting the hook out this time.
It is not. How about this? Debbie Whistler, I live at 48 West Mill Street in Clayton. So I forgive this abrupt, but I've got five minutes, so I'm just gonna read rapid-fire. So I just wanted to revisit one more time the fall leaf pickup, because time is of the essence, if there's going to be any kind of course correction on this. Discontinuing leaf pickup is not merely a matter of inconvenience or financial principle. This act directly impacts the health, safety, property, and well-being of our entire community. Environmental specialists agree that clogged drain systems create two major problems: flooding and poor water quality. Failure to remove excess leaves brings about conditions rife for backed-up drain pipes, causing residential flooding of streets, yards, and basements. The excess water saturates leach fields, interfering with the proper removal of human waste through our septic systems. Yards will flood, seeping into the basements that are in close proximity to the pooling. Streets could flood and freeze as winter sets in, creating hazardous driving and walking conditions, especially where there are no sidewalks, like in our village of Clayton. Cleaning out the drainage systems, or better yet, preventing clogged drains, is a fiscal and ecological predictability, and we will have to do that sooner or later. Poor water quality is a second big problem resulting from abandoned leaf pickup in Clayton. Decomposing leaves and nitrogen, add nitrogen and phosphorus to stormwater. The effects promote a cyanobacterial environment, creating public health hazards to humans and threatening wildlife. Those nutrients also cause oxygen depletion in waterways that kill fish. They can also allow invasive aquatic plants to flourish, leading to far-reaching ramifications in this area. Many of us depend on our wells as the only fresh potable water source in our homes. We ask the city to prioritize, prioritize leaf pickup every year to avoid these potential dangers. Additionally, this change will lead to a market increase in residents burning leaves, which adds to air pollution and releases irritants that cause respiratory problems and other health issues for our citizens. Not to mention, a heightened risk of uncontainable wildfires in our neighborhoods. Leaf burning should be minimized, not exponentially increased. After speaking with city officials, it seems like there might be a possible way to reinstate leaf pickup. The leaf machines were in good repair when stored away last fall. It should only need annual maintenance on the bearings. The estimated time to do that is two to three weeks. The cost of doing the leaf pickup is roughly $11,000 for labor, equipment, and fuel per sweep. And it usually takes five or six passes to get everybody taken care of, so 50,000 to 60,000. If we did at least half the sweeps, the heavier locations, maybe a couple more, the lighter, maybe a couple less, we might be looking at half of that at 30,000. Clayton's emergency fund, number 175, has a current balance of 182,000. I would argue that we are talking about an emergency preventative service here. So we would, I would like, we would like for you to go back to the table and figure out a way to get this done somehow. We have 12 weeks of fall ahead of us. It is clearly what your community wants. It is clearly what they need. So please reinstate leaf pickup this fall. It is absolutely possible and absolutely necessary. That's it. I'm done. Thank you. Oh, my gosh. Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your comments are duly noted. Thank you. Appreciate your input. Christie? Bob Fay? Anything else? Terry Kipling? I think he left. Charlotte Jones? Okay. Is there anyone that I, that's name I did not call that wishes to speak? Okay, so hearing none. We're gonna move, pardon? Oh, yeah, Earl, sorry.
Earl Harlemur, 6420 Lavon Court. I'm your parks director. We are going to paint down in the park, horse gravel, on the 28th- We are going to paint down in the park horse gravel on the 28th of September. Lord be willing, and it doesn't rain. Of course, Randy over there is already poking me. But, and Mr. Farmer, you're excused because you asked me last time. Okay, we want to get it done. We're going to start at nine o'clock in the morning. We're going to be done by 12 o'clock. So bring your paint brushes, bring your, anything you want to, and wear old clothes because I know we're sloppy with paint, so. But we are going to try to spray, spray some of it, so we're going to try to get it all done in three hours, so. And you're all welcome to come down. We'll have fun. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your continued work and interest in the city. So the next item on our agenda is old business, and it looks like we have two ordinances. And both of these are the second of two readings, so if you would read the first ordinance.
Ordinance 0092416, an ordinance to confirm acceptance of specified right-of-way dedication at Sweet Potato Ridge Road.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. And will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0092417, an ordinance to confirm acceptance of specified right-of-way dedication at Salem Avenue and Union Road.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous also. And we have, looks like two ordinances that are new business, and they are the, both proposals that we had discussed tonight in the public hearing. And this will be the first of two readings for both of these. Will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0092418, an ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the application for a change in zoning from RSD Residential Single-Unit District to CMX Commercial Mixed Use for 5.0753 acres of property located at Winger Road and Hope Road and bearing the parcel ID numbers M60031090030, M60031090060, and M60031090034 within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the ordinance as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And can we have a roll call on that, please?
Farmer?
No.
Mr. Henning?
I was on the fence, but Mr. Bowers' testimony tonight stating in support, I am for.
Mr. Gorman?
Yes.
Mr. Merkel?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
I abstain due the, due to the fact that I'm speaking for myself, this directly impacts my family's property.
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes. So the ordinance passes five to one with one abstention, so. Okay, will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0092419, an ordinance adopting, rejecting, or modifying the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the application for a change in zoning from RCD II Rural Conservation District to RSD Residential Single-Unit District for 10 acres of property located at Hope Road and Westbrook Road bearing the parcel ID number M60032060020 within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Hold up. Before we, before we go forward, I want to make sure, because this is one of those weirdly worded ordinances. The Planning Commission decided that, you know, they, they turned down the application. So the ordinance to adopt, which would actually be a yes vote, is to reject the applicant, the applicant.
I would vote to reject the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve.
I'll second that motion.
And you need five votes.
Okay, there's a motion, the motion's on the table to reject the Planning Commission's, I'll make sure I say this right. Reject their denial and accept the applicant's application. Let's, can we just have, let's have a roll call. It was, Mr. Henning made the motion and Ms. Kelly, Ms. Kelly, yeah, we had two.
Tim did too.
Okay.
Let Tim.
Let's have a roll call on that one.
Farmer?
Okay, I think I'm voting yes for.
If you.
I'm agreeing with the Planning Commission on this one.
Then you want to vote no? No.
I'm voting no.
I'm voting yes.
Henning, yes? Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. Yes, so I want to make sure, again, that we all know what's going on here. So we voted to deny the Planning Commission's denial, rejection.
The property is now zoned residential.
You have a second reading.
Yeah, there's a second reading, but, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thanks to both the applicants that came in tonight. We appreciate you and your interest in our city. And we also have two resolutions tonight. Will you read the first resolution?
Resolution R092450, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Montgomery County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Mr. Schleitzer?
Evening. This is what we do each year. The county has sent the rates for levies that we have and the amounts we're going to collect. I would like to note that the, the general fund millage, we have 1.6 mils that's inside the 10 mil limit. That, that levy is not capped like our police and fire levies are, so we're seeing a $155,000 increase is what they're projecting for collection next year. And that's, that's doing part to the property values that have increased. But then on the flip side, for the police and fire, since those are capped, we're not collecting as much, and you're seeing about a $16,000 increase for those, and that's mostly on its new construction.
Any questions or comments for Kevin on this?
Kevin always gets an award for doing what he does, so we would be silly to go against it. So I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written, second by, or by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R092451, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements and execute needed documentation with Med Account Management, Inc., Public Consulting Group, and/or the State of Ohio and Medicaid to participate in the ground emergency medical transport supplemental payment program.
I'll move for approval.
Mayor Council?
Chief?
So it's always about, you know, we always try to see how much we can get for medical transport outside of our residents paying is what we've always tried to do. Obviously, we have, you know, a, a good number of our residents that use Medicaid, Medicare. Last year, the State of Ohio actually passed a bill that would help make up the difference between what Medicaid pays, what the insurance pays, try to make us whole for our transport that we make. 14 other states currently do this, so Ohio actually passed law last year to make that, that happen. So what that means for us is that we need to opt in to that plan if we want to do that. And since the state has a biannual budget, they have to have this, have to have this done now by November. The state just got with all the agencies as of July, so it's a quick turnaround. And basically, what they're going to do is basically, they look at how much a transport costs for us. And right now, actual cost is close to $950 to $1,000 per transport is what actual cost. So they take our budgets, our personnel, how many calls we take, and they actually tell you how much it costs for you to do a medical transport. And then they look at what Medicaid pays, and then they see what the state portion of that would be and what the federal portion of that would be to make you whole. So it gets complicated, but basically, we're going to get the federal share, hopefully, as this plan, of about 60% of what we write off from Medicaid. So we're looking at about, a little bit about $105,000 a year additional revenue once this goes through. And then there'll be some financial stuff that the city and Kevin need to do. And we're just asking you to allow the city manager in, enter into agreements with Med Account, who is our current medical billing company, will help take that process on. There could also be MOUs with the state or with Medicaid down the future to make these things happen. So we're just asking for that permission down the road to make, when that comes about. We don't want to be caught behind the eight ball and lose out on this possible funding.
I'll move approval again.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous also. And our next item is our city manager's report. Amanda?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a few items for you this evening. One, we will have an open seat on the Board of Zoning Appeals. One of our members has indicated that she's no longer interested when her term expires in December. So we will begin advertising for that position. We'll bring the resumes to city council, and you can make a decision on who you would like to appoint. As always, you can always bring your own candidates. It's best if you send in the resumes, though the candidate can go out with the rest of them to the whole, full body of council, so everyone can look at everyone all at the same time, but you can always bring your own candidate. Again, there is that new requirement for fraud reporting from the Ohio Auditor of State. I still have two council members who I am missing.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm looking at you and the gentleman behind you. So I'm missing those two. That is due by the 28th, Elaine, is that correct? By the 28th of September. And we are required by the state to do that. We'll get dinged on our audits if we don't have it. So I can talk to you after the meeting if you want to set something up and come in, and we can get it done. Yeah, it's a total of seven minutes. It's, it's easy. So Montgomery County Soil and Water for the Winger Road Drainage Project, they rescheduled the public view and the public hearing for the 9th of, is it October? I'm sorry, I think it's October 9th. The legal notice is attached. I'm sorry, I'm just scanning in here. It is, it's October 9th at 10:00 a.m. at Janus Ward. And I did call Soil and Water and ask them why it was at 10 o'clock on a weekday. And they told me that it's directly after one of their board meetings, and that's why it's scheduled for that time. 10:00 a.m. on October 9th at Janus Ward. And notice was sent out to the, the property owners in the vicinity that would be affected by this. And this is the changes that were made when the property owners didn't want the drainage project running through their rear yards, and it changed to the front. Since we have Chief Garber here, he graduated from the Leadership Academy last week on September 11th. This is through the Center for Local Government.
Congratulations.
Chief Garber is actually our third staff member who has gone through this. Elaine graduated in '23, and then Jack, who went on to be the city manager in Brookville, graduated from the Leadership Academy in '22. And Brian and Elaine, neither of you are allowed to leave. Just so you are all aware, so if you'll recall back in June, Schneck Development came in and gave council a presentation in a work session about Warner, what they're calling Warner Village on Sweet Potato Ridge Road near Main Street. They are having their own open house. This is outside of the city's process. They have not submitted anything to Planning Commission, but they are looking for the public's input on this site and what the public would like to see there with the development that they have. They are holding an open house at Meadowbrook on Monday, October 1st from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Their goal is to have as many people from the area there to talk about what the plan is and what they would like to see. So that is just an FYI. That is completely outside of the city's process. It's not a public meeting for us. That is their own open house.
Amanda, I just have one question.
Report you said, it says under schmacking, it says on Mondays, October 1st.
Yes.
And then go down two paragraphs on, on the issue six meeting, it's Monday, September 30th.
October 1st is Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, it is October 1st, oh.
The 30th is a Monday.
Okay, so then it's the Tuesday. It's October 1st, whatever day of the week, no, so whatever day it falls on, it is October 1st is the day that they're having it. So we are having a drug-free workplace training here at the city on September 24th from 1:30 to 2:30. During that time, phone calls to the city will be directed to voicemail, just as an FYI. It'll just be for that hour, so everyone can participate in that. The Fall Newsletter is attached. It is posted at the city's website. It's being pushed out on social media as well. And then also, staff would like to give a Meadowbrook update on October 3rd. We'll just do that as a special presentation since we have the homecoming parade prior to our council meeting that evening. And then issue six is the police and fire levy that we are putting on on November 5th. There will be two informational meetings. One is Monday, September 30th. You're right, Tim, Monday is September 30th. It's, it is a Monday. Monday, September 30th at 6:30 p.m. It is here at this building. There's also a Zoom option if you would like to participate virtually. And then again, we'll hold another one October 15th, 2024, which is a Tuesday. And the same time, 8:30, or 6:30 here in this room, and then there will also be a Zoom option as well if you'd like to do that. There is a flyer with information that has been put on our, on our social media. We'll have print copies here. We'll put them at the library and at the YMCA for people to access. Hopefully, we get a lot of participation and get information out. And while I have both chiefs here, I would like a very brief little statement on current staffing and where our fire and police fall in comparison to other jurisdictions.
Okay. Well. I'm going to make it brief. I only have three pages. No. So our current staffing levels are, you know, we have six people staffed a day, so we have 18 people. Positions, I should say, and that is filled by 24 different personnel making up part-time and full-time staffing. In the last eight years, I just pulled this, and I was shocked. We have actually lost over 50 people in the last eight years. So we've actually turned over our department twice. So every four years, we're turning over the department, basically. Obviously, you've got some people that maintain through that, but over 50 people is a, a lot. Also, this year, you know, we, we did make cuts in the budget, and it did, most of those cuts came through staffing. Close to $200,000 in staffing cuts. One of those was a battalion chief position that we did not fill. Another was part-time staff, overtime, and then something about $50,000 to $60,000 in operational. So we did cut about $250,000 out of our budget this year, so we are not operating as we have in the past. Also, we, you know, we only run at six, and that is our, our maximum and our minimum. And people don't really understand what that means. So I'm going to try to give you an example. So as soon as someone takes off, we have to fill that position some way because we can't fall below it. So if I put it in terms of a 40-hour workperson, i- if you guys work 40 hours, you work Monday through Friday. You work your typical Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday, you get called for overtime because that position needs filled because someone isn't there, so you get to work it, or you get forced to work it. So what that means is these people, because our minimum and our maximum are the same, they get vacation. But if you look at their hours, they still work the same amount of hours in a year whether they take vacation or not because they're filling other spots. So they really don't get time off. Okay, and that's, 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 that's a struggle. As you can see, it's our turnover rate. If you don't get time off, they're going to find someone where they can because your minimum and maximum is so small. And then when you look about where we fall as far as wage scales, we did our typical eight to nine cities that are like and similar to us. And we rank eight out of nine, so we are almost the lowest-paid department in the area when it comes to that. So when people say that we're overpaid, or the department is overpaid, not even close. So we are at the bottom of that list, and that's not attractiveness. And, you know, we don't want to, and we've become a training ground. We keep hearing that over and over, and you can see that when you lose 50 people. We are a training ground, and they leave, and they're successful, and they do another community very well. Our goal should be a destination. We want to be a destination for other people to come here and stay here and serve our community. And what we put into them over that year or two before we lose them stays here, and we all benefit. So we just wanted to give that quick update on where our staffing is. Like I said, people think it's just as you knew, as usual, as normal. This is actually a different year for us on staffing and, and how we operate, so.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, sure. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate you. Chief?
I'm going to make the same points. My authorized staff is 20 officers. I'm down to 16. I've got one on medical leave, and the rest are slots we haven't filled because of cost. One thing I, I want to bring up is, you know, I know everything is going up, and we just went through the ECPC meeting. I know we got hit with quite a bit of increase on charges for dispatch, but we are not overstaffed. If you look at our staffing, it is the lowest since 2017, and we had 13 full-time officers. I looked. But what we did have was six part-time, and four of those were working full-time hours. hours. So, yes, we're, we've had lower staffing when it comes to full-time. Not really. I mean, not really. These empty slots, if it fails, the issue fails, and empty slots won't, empty slots won't get filled. I mean, and that's going to create overtime. And I have to remind, you know, council that we have a wage reopener in '25 and '26. And SERB right now is saying 3% for raises, and if this doesn't pass, you know, council's going to have to decide, are you not going to give raises? And what that's going to bring is retention problems. We're going to have our experienced officers leaving. We are, we are currently almost a training ground, like Brian stated before, for the fire department. We're currently there. I've got two officers thinking about leaving because they're kind of worried about the levy. And, you know, you're going to see higher overtime costs. So, I, I mean, I realize, again, things are going up, but operationally, the police department's costs are expensive, you know? Our pay, and Brian has already brought it, we did a cost comparison to everybody else. We are the second-lowest-paid department in the, in our area by several dollars. And, you know, everybody goes, well, you know, police officers don't cost that much. Well, $133,000 per officer put on the street, and that's equipment, training, testing, and the whole bit. So, costs aren't going down, and I know it's tough. I can't say that enough, but we have some big decisions tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief. I want to just add a, kind of a word to both of the chiefs, something that they didn't get a chance to, you know, expound on here tonight, but both of our, both our departments are way, way above average. I mean, both, both are excellent. We have great equipment. You know, the people aren't coming and leaving because they're not getting the right resources. It's just, it's purely a pay issue, and that's not, I mean, you can look at the chart and see that we're going to continue to be turning people over if we don't, if we don't step it up. And again, to me, it's not part of the past, it's part of the future. If we want to continue to have the outstanding police and fire and first responders that we have, we have to support them, and our city has to support them. It's not free. If it was, it'd be great, but it's not, and it's, it's very costly. And, but every one of us, you know, that are residents of Clayton, you know, need to understand that this is a super important thing for us to, to be able to get out there. I, I think it's a really great package deal when you look at the, all the pluses and minuses on the levy. I get it, no one wants, you know, levy's a bad word in most people's mind, but our city, it's time that we step up and we have to support these folks, and we have to support our city staff if we're going to, if we're going to have a bright future.
Can I add one thing? Not to mention to keep our standards with one of the safest cities. That's so important. And if you're thinking about voting either way, look at that. How are we going to uphold that standard if we don't consider that being one of the plus size? And not to mention the fact, we've had chiefs tell us both how much we've saved by the fact that they're understaffed right now, and that's going to continue, and we don't want to cut staff, and especially police and fire.
Advertise a Clayton Concerned Citizens page. Is that something we're doing as the city, or?
That is not. So, that is an outside pack.
Okay, because I saw the, the town hall was advertised for that, so I just wondered.
No, it is not through the city. It's an outside.
And then we're advertising that town hall on our social media.
We absolutely are.
Okay.
It's also on our website.
Cool.
Just a couple more items for you. Well, the hot, one of the hot topics, leaf collection. To get the messaging out, we have put on our incoming calls, the answering, a message basically letting residents know that the city will not be completing leaf pickup this year, and that they are able to have their leaves bagged and picked up by Rumpke between October 1st, which is a Tuesday, and, say, October 1st and December 15th. Also, there will be a reverse call through the HyperReach system that'll go out tomorrow to everyone who is listed on, that's 3,000 numbers, Brian? Yeah, 3,500 numbers with that.
Email the two people who have signed up or who have landlines that I can try.
Yes. So, that, that message will go out to them too. So, I completely expect an influx of phone calls to the city about that after that, but it's the best way for us to get the messaging out. We can put something out on the board out front. It's also in the newsletter. It's on the website. It's been put on, on social media. So, we're trying to get the word out to residents that there's going to have to be alternatives this year. And then lastly, the homecoming parade is October 3rd. If you could let me know by September 23rd if you plan to attend. There are a couple of members who have already let me know, but if I could hear from the rest of the body sooner rather than later, so I can get our form into the school, so we know how many golf carts to get as well.
I'll be there.
I'll be there also.
All right. Yes, you did. And that's all I have for you this evening unless you have questions.
Anything for the city manager?
The only thing I had, Amanda, was, I know we had talked about it at a previous meeting, and Martina and you were going to move forward with a new something for planning commission. Martina, where do we stand with that?
So, we were actually talking about that before the meeting. We're going to get materials together. I believe that planning commission meeting is October 28th, so we're going to meet next week to get the materials for that together.
And if, if they would, I mean, do they have the ability to deny the changes, or if they deny it, can we move forward with saying, no, we want this, or how does that work?
Well, I mean, I think at that point, so whenever it goes to planning commission, it's a staff recommendation. I think there will be some give and take with planning commission on what they'd like to see as well, and then they'll make that recommendation. We can make whatever changes. The recommendation then would come to council, and you can make the same decisions you made tonight. You could reject it or accept it.
Or amend it.
Or amend it, yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I just would say, I talked to Amanda earlier about a situation in my ward with an individual who will be given a second notice on 9/23, and Amanda has been very helpful with, you know, getting that information out there, and it just, it's keeping Daryl busy. So, I, I'm very glad this is another tool that Daryl has for, for residents to know to take him serious.
Anything else for the city manager?
And I just have, this is more for city council, I think, than for you. Since we have a 6:00 parade and we have a meeting at 7:30, what if we all just wear our Clayton shirts to the parade and wear them to the meeting for one night out of the year?
That is your prerogative.
Instead, everybody trying to run home and change their clothes and...
If that's what council wants to do, that's absolutely fine with me.
Sounds like a plan, Tim.
We used to do our pink ribbon. Cities.
Okay, anything else for the city manager? Okay. Not yet.
Well, I, so even after council comments, I need, I need a brief executive session. I promise it'll be brief.
I read the minutes.
Council, Mr. Bachman, you want to start?
You've been starting with me a lot lately.
I know.
Evening, everyone. Start off, welcome to Officer Anderson and firefighter Gates. Listen to backgrounds and the excitement from the two chiefs there. It's great additions, you know, to, to one of the, to in the finest departments here in the area, so welcome to them. Regardless, you know, some I touched on earlier this year, but, you know, regarding the things with the rezoning, and this is maybe just kind of how I look at, you know, political philosophy and things like that with property rights. When someone comes to us, the government, says, hey, you know, I want to, you know, rezone my property. I take that very seriously in the fact that it's now the government saying, okay, here, we're, we're telling you what you can and can't do with your property. You know, in the legal, you know, in America, legal world, you're innocent until proven guilty. I look at it when someone comes for something to rezone here, I kind of give them the benefit of the doubt, and then I have to be sold on, you know, is this actually something that is going to be detrimental to, you know, the surrounding area or the community? And as I stated a few months ago here, this is America, and property ownership rights do matter. So, doesn't mean I'm going to, you know, I'm a rubber stamp for anything that comes here. I don't think anyone should be, but I think, you know, they're just, I'm always going to look at it from that sense. So, in these two situations here, you know, these people are coming to us and saying, you know, what we're intent, what we're hoping to sell these for, if it's zoned this way, it's going to be more valuable. That's a big deal to, to people there. That's literally, again, the government saying, you know, we, you know, yes or no, we think your property should be valued in a certain way. Something we all need to take seriously at times here, and I especially do, and I, you know, can't speak for, for everyone up here, but, you know, I hope that we all do there at all times, so. All I had on that, so.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly?
I made my statements just a few minutes ago about issue six. It's imperative, and we need to re, we need to consider all the options, but if you don't want to lose staff, if you don't want to see our safest city going the opposite direction, then you need to consider voting. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Greg?
The, the concern with the vote for the issue coming up in November is on for the police and fire, but my, my thought is also keep in mind that we're also talking about the rest of the city staff. That other persons that work with the city are just as important. While they're not named directly, you do have the service department and the personnel that work under Randy that put work in every single day, you know, whether it be the summer or the winter, you know, they're the ones you depend upon in the wintertime to clear the streets of the snow, or pick up the leaves when we have a leaf pickup. So, those individuals are not to be forgotten in terms of this whole mix of things. And, you know, the one thing that impacts people from the standpoint of as money gets tighter is that the services get cut, and you try to cut the services before you cut the personnel. And cities are service-oriented from the standpoint, you don't raise money, you're, you're costing money. And what are you getting for the money that you're, that you're giving when you pay taxes that support everything? And, you know, comments have been made in the past that the city is not transparent as far as how it expends money. And, you know, that's, I find that, you know, offensive from the standpoint of what you see and what, from the personnel that are here and the, and the things that they do and the, and the work that we do. And, you know, you just ask the person to want to make those comments, that they need to come in and actually sit down with the people and go through the numbers and spend a day with people as far as seeing what they do with what they've got. And, you know, I think they would be somewhat amazed with the, the ability for persons that work for the city to utilize the limited resources that they have to get as much work done. And, you know, I want to commend everybody for the work that they do because you're the, you're the thing that makes it all happen. You know, we just sit up here, you know, face the crowd, you know, twice a month, but everyone else is the one that does the work. And I don't want those persons that make up the city to be forgotten in this mess. And I'm here to support you. So, everyone needs to get out and vote in, in November, and, you know, vote your conscience, but just also remember there's consequences, and it goes all the way around. So, if you have any questions, I mean, I'm, I'm always available to answer questions, you know, within the limits of which I can speak, so that stands always.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
I think Tina and Greg said it also. All I'll say is vote for issue six.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
Well, if we're going to be talking, you know, lay out the rules. So, October 7th is the last date of register to vote, if you did not know that. Early voting starts on October 8th, and it will run for 28 days. October 8th, 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., early voting at the Board of Elections. It's 451 West Third Street, Dayton for us in Montgomery County. Absentee ballots go out October 8th. On the start of early vote that Tuesday, if you've requested an absentee ballot, it will come in the mail very quickly, starting on that week of October 8th, if you're not able to go vote in person downtown at the Board of Elections. And if you have any questions in regards to the full 200-plus hours of early voting that you can do in person at the Board of Elections, or if you don't know where your polling location is, or any other questions you have, just visit voteohio.gov, V-O-T-E-O-H-I-O.gov, and you will find all the information you need on there for how to go about exercising your right to vote. And finally, I also wanted to welcome Officer Anderson and firefighter EMT Gates to the team. And, you know, the other thing is, as every individual said, you know, Kevin has done a tremendous job with finances over the years, so we've always listened to him. He's very transparent. We cannot thank him enough. He's won awards for what he does. So, if anybody has questions about the finances and needs to know why this is important, I would reach out to Kevin and send him or Amanda a message, and they'll get them the information they need. Thank you.
And Kenny will be working how many hours now?
It's going to be fun. Until Electoral College on December 17th.
Well, you have to earn your money, you know. Mr. Farmer?
Good evening, everyone. First off, Chief Garber, congrats on graduation from Leadership Academy. I'm always in support of education and certification, and in the spirit of the fire department, don't burn anything right now. It's really dry out there, and I always enjoy a crunchy walk through the woods. Also, planning commission, yeah, I was man of the island tonight, and I had some good conversation with Mr. Muncie, who's on the planning commission. He's a land use attorney, a lot of experience. I expect to talk to him more in the future, but I respect all the members of the planning commission, appreciate what they do. They are volunteers of the community to help council make a better decision. And finally, I September 28th come out and help out at Hardscrabble. Sorry, I can't be there, Earl. But getting those facilities painted will just be icing on the cake for a beautiful park, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. So, for my comments, this is going to be definitely a little bit different, but if you'd indulge me just for a second, it's not very long, it's 27 seconds, but I'd like for everyone to hear something. I received, this is the first time I've ever had this since I've been the mayor, I received a, an anonymous voicemail. So, I don't know who the person is. It shows up as unknown on my phone, and so I can't call them back or anything like that. But I think this is, well, you be the judge.
Just say, do not let these Haitians come into Clayton. I've already seen them in Kroger's. I've made a complaint with them. I'm boycotting them because they're allowing them in there. I don't want to see Haitians here in Clayton, or I'm out of here, and so are a lot of other people. I'm telling you that right now. Thank you.
Okay, so what I want to say about that is, you know, I guess it's the Haitians' turn. You know, we, we started our country, you know, we, we killed off the indigenous people because they were heathens. You know, as you march on to the Ellis Island years and all the immigrations that came in, you know, then it was the Irish's turn, you know, they were all drunks, you know, we don't want them around here, you know? I mean, this crosses all, all borders here. You know, in, in Germany, it was the Jews, you know, they were, they were our main problem at that time. You know, in our country, we have African-Americans, you know, they're, they're lazy, they don't want to work. They're our big problem. They're taking our jobs. In the 70s, it was the Japanese, if you remember that, you know, the Japs are taking all our jobs, you know, it was just because they had better cars and better technology, you know, but some, for somehow, they were our problem at that time. We've had problems with every other group, you know, the ongoing problem with Mexico, you know, yeah, we deport all the Mexicans, guess what? Our economy is gone. We don't see it as much here in Ohio, but if you go to California and you go to all the southwestern states, they run the economy out there. So, now it's the Haitians. You know, they're eating dogs and cats over there in Springfield, and, you know, I just, I don't look at this as a Republican-Democrat problem. I don't look at it as a left-right problem. This is a human-being problem we have going on here, a continuing human-being problem. And why we can't just be good humans, I don't know. I mean, we, you know, we accept Mr. Farmer's vote tonight, you know, he was, like he said, he was the lone man. Well, we don't vilify him for that. We, we respect his opinion, and we respect... We respect his opinion, and we respect these other people over there. And I just, I don't know, I just think if I knew who this lady was, you know, I would, you know, kind of be interested to see, you know, if she would say anything other than anonymous, which she wouldn't. Most racists are anonymous. They're in the closet about it. And if she would, I think I would have to tell her, you know, if that's your attitude, I'm okay with you leaving. I'm embarrassed for her. I'm ashamed of her for saying these words to me, especially without putting a name on it. And who knows who watches, you know, these videos. If she's on, maybe she'll have some courage and speak up. But if not, I feel sad for her, I feel sorry for her, and I'm embarrassed and ashamed of her as a Clayton resident. And I've never said that about any resident. So, that is my... That's what I wanted to say tonight. We do have the need for an executive session, so is there a motion?
We're going to executive session.
The purpose of the executive session would be for matters pertaining to litigation pursuant to Higher Vice Code 121.22-G3 and G5.
Motion to go into... It's kind of split there, but that's all right. Motion to go into executive session by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Sure.
Okay, we're gonna go... Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call?
Farmer?
Yes.
Henny?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes.
And I don't expect any... I don't need a vote after this, so there's no action going to be taken.
Yeah, so if everyone... We won't take offense if everyone leaves, but you certainly can stay. Yeah, thanks for all for coming.
And I don't expect any, I don't need a vote after this, so there's no action going to be done.
Yeah, so if everyone, we won't take offense if everyone leaves, but you can, you certainly can stay. Yeah, thanks for all, all for coming. Okay, we're back in regular session.